Good evening. Welcome to the June work session of the Rose Tree Media School Board. The school board holds monthly work sessions to carry out its responsibilities in public as dictated by the Sunshine Law. At these meetings, the board's standing committees conduct the work of the board through discussion with administration. We welcome the public to these meetings and depending on the length of the agenda, may be able to entertain public comments. If we're not able to address comments, we encourage emails to either committee chairs or the administration. As a reminder to where our conversations should focus, the students are the center of the RTMSD learning community. Our mission states that all students will reach their intellectual, emotional, social, and physical potential in a safe environment that celebrates diversity, individual talents and efforts, and promotes collaboration, caring, respect, and leadership. Students will be well-prepared to create meaningful and productive lives in a global society. All right, so we will begin with finance and operations. First up is the K-1 Center update.
Thank you, Dr. Napson-Williams. So with us this evening is Jennifer Grafen from the Schrader Group and Phil Solomon from ICS to give us a very thorough update on where we are right now with the K-1 Center, current status, what we're looking forward to moving into the summer. So I'm going to turn it over to them. Jennifer's going to pull up her presentation. We'll be ready to go.
All right, well, we're waiting for that. You know, thank you for having us back. Actually, we'll make sure we're nice and loud. There we go. Okay. So tonight is kind of an exciting, exciting point. It's where we go from like the 2D images and we can actually render kind of 3D images. So you start to see how a building might come together. It's, uh, sorry. It could be agenda slides. Okay. So. There's a lag. Oh, there's a lag. Okay.
A pretty big lag.
A big one. Well, I'll just tell you. So we're going to go over the prior, you know, images, how we got here. And then we're going to show how we've been, oh, I'm sorry, let me get this closer to. And then we're going to show how it has advanced recently, as well as how we've integrated some of the potential athletics. I know that you haven't made a decision on that, but just how that might lay out. We'll talk about the budget as well as timeline. So really, a lot of this is going to be Jennifer, but I'm going to wait until she gets the pieces up here. And then she's going to walk us through kind of the progress of the schematic.
It is really lacking.
It's not advancing.
It's on my side, but it's not advancing on that.
All right, it's getting warmer. All right.
Okay.
We may have to pre-advance the slides if they're going to take that long. Let's just see if it's all caught up now.
So this part will be pretty brief. We're just going, oh, it's going back and forth. Sorry about that. We're going to give you a quick recap. Previously, we talked about the site that's selected for this project, which is the Riddle property adjacent to the high school at the intersection of Middletown Road and Rose Tree Road. And as we move to the next slide, let me take a second. The next slide, which will pop up on your screen in just a second, shows the entirety of the property, including the Penn Crest High School and the Riddle property with the intention of looking at this as one complete site. There will be a reverse subdivision that combines the rural property with the existing Penn Crest High School site. Yeah, yeah. That's the site. Just move on to the next.
Sorry, I was going to switch, but we, because there's no more.
Yeah. Unless you want to join by Zoom and jump in.
Speed images, so.
What's that?
Perhaps the size of the image is landing. I'm not sure. No.
It's a PDF, so it shouldn't. Yeah. It shouldn't affect it.
Okay, well, we're on to the next slide. So this is the prior concept site plan that we had shared previously. And this shows the development of the K-1 Center and the parking, et cetera, isolated to the parcel itself. So we had everything contained with two in and outs off of Rose Tree Road. And this is also showing in the southern part of the slide, the potential re-alignment of Rose Tree Road as a PennDOT project. So that was previous. Yeah, I know.
I'm going to join from my machine to just see if there's a.
Yeah, I don't know what's what. So. There we go. And as you're joining, the high school athletic master plan, this was sort of new information for us from the original planning of the K-1 Center. So the last meeting that we were here, we talked about the athletic master plan and the opportunities that we saw with what was proposed for this work, including opportunities to connect roadways, the adjacencies of some parking that is going to be close to the K-1 Center. And so we started to look at that. Ella's joining in just a second. You'll be a little faster.
Maybe you can, maybe you can talk and describe, you know.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay, so we did a quick site analysis that we were looking at, considering the whole campus, the inner workings of the site and the parking. And we looked at some of the advantages to doing that. So we would be able to reduce the number of entrances and exits off of Rose Tree Road from two to one. We would be able to connect the site internally to the high school site, which would give us the opportunity to use the existing Barron Road access to the Penn Crest High School to allow us to circulate through the site. And we saw some advantages there in terms of helping to reduce some of the traffic on Rose Tree Road, keeping the buses within the site versus having to access it from Rose Tree Road. And also the adjacent parking facility, the parking lot that would be associated with the field, with the multipurpose field, would give us some additional, one more. Would give us some additional. Next one. Next one. There you go. Yeah, and that would give us some additional overflow parking for events for both the high school and the elementary school. Together, we'd be able to share some of the site amenities. We also talked a little bit about the program. We started at the study phase with a program of about 120,700 square feet. As we worked through the program, we included some things like the Linking Learning to Life program, and that brought us closer to 125,000 square feet with an alternative to include district student services for 130. And so what we proceeded with at this point is including the Linking Learning to Life program, but doing the district student services as an alternative. Go ahead. And then we also shared some design aspirations for the vision for what this K-1 Center could be. Which brings us to where we are today, which is schematic design. You can go ahead. So we've taken an overall look at the whole campus, and this is sort of where we are today with that whole concept of the high school athletic fields and the K-1 Center. You can advance. I'm just having all kinds of problems today. So this is just a little closer look at the K-1 Center and how the inner workings of the site would work. We're looking at separating bus and parent drop-off. The parent drop-off is on the south side of the site with some parking right off of Rose Tree Road. The north side, the top of the elementary school or the K-1 Center is bus drop-off and faculty parking. So that's connected back to the high school that allows us to keep the buses internal versus off of Rose Tree Road. Also providing an athletic field, a practice field, or, you know, a multipurpose field for the K-1 Center. And an orientation of the building that gives us optimal solar orientation for building design. We can move on to the next one. So what this looks like in a floor plan is something like this. We'll move from left to right. On the left side of the page, you can see in the orange, the gym and the gym and everything to the left of that. Those are the mechanical type spaces, the public spaces, the Linking Learning to Life program. As you move to the center of the space, you see a green area off the main entrance. That's the dining space. And then as we continue to move to your right, we'll enter into some administration space that's sort of at the center that separates the public spaces from what we call private spaces, which are the academic spaces. And then what we have in the center is an open media center that is flanked by four classroom pods on each floor. This is a two-story building. And each pod has five classrooms, small group instruction, breakout areas for large group instruction, so that there's a self-contained pod that is accessible to a central core of a media center. And then the two classroom pods are paired against an open outdoor play area that can be designed for outdoor learning, outdoor play. There's a lot of different opportunities there. Can move to the second floor. And I didn't mention this, but I'll say it as we're waiting for the transition. Some of the orange spaces that you see as you move from left to right, those are the art and the steam classrooms on the first floor. So as students are entering the classrooms, they get access to these wonderful steam spaces to help promote curiosity and excitement. On the second floor, a very similar configuration. It's open to the library below in the center. And the purple that you see there is the music. So the students coming up to the second floor at the beginning of the day, they also get exposure to these wonderful steam spaces on display before they enter their classrooms. Move on to the next one. We've also taken a look at initial massing studies, and these are really just designed to show you what a building would look like on the site. So you can get a sense of scale, how a building might be broken down, because we want to not only consider, you know, like roof lines and what the students might find inviting, but also scale, breaking that down, so it's not an overwhelming building. So here, we're looking at a concept with peaked roofs that's, you know, provocative of, you know, maybe a residence that they come from. It's something welcoming that they're familiar with and inviting. We have a second scenario that looks at this a little differently, and it's a little hard to see on the screen, but it's a similar idea where we're taking, you know, a single pitch instead of a V-shaped pitch. It just creates a little different take on that gabled roof, a little bit more playful. So these are some of our initial ideas on how we might, you know, mass this building and what it might look like on the site.
Yeah, sorry, the image is much clearer on mine. I don't know why it's presenting. I can certainly show it surround if you'd like. So to the budget, so as you know. Oh, is it? Okay, great. Yeah, I, okay, got it. Okay, that's good. That's good to know. So working through the budget, you know, we had an original concept design that was at 120,000 square feet. That is your column to the left here. I was going to see if I could use my mouse to point. It's pretty slow, but at that original conceptual budget, we were at about $81.5 million. What we've done is we've moved, you know, we've moved through schematic design. The program has grown just a little bit to 125,000, about 125,700 square feet. When we pull all that through the rest of the program, the budget moves to about $84 million. We have two other columns. These are the column that is right here, which says Athletics Alternate 1. So when you looked at the plan, the piece that's connecting essentially the K-1 Center and the high school, there is the multipurpose field there. So that first column includes the multipurpose field as well as the additional parking. When we add that to the budget, you move to $93.7 million. The final column is if you were to add the additional two soccer fields plus the soccer in terms of turf, plus the turf field at Springton Lake Middle School, that would move your budget to $101.5 million. So these are all budgetary numbers at this point.
I just want to make sure we're really clear that there's no confusion. Like, this is not an, we are just combining two projects that were already in the works. This is not something new that we have just thought of. We were already looking at doing the turf, because the turf, the fields need to be done. And that is what you're talking about there, is just bringing in so we can look at all those different things.
Excellent clarification. As we look at all the different things that were occurring on site, it just made so much sense to pull them together. In addition to that, if you're going to go to land development for this one project, you would want to do that in tandem, if you were going to move that along. Even if you weren't going to build the fields or authorize the fields now, if you moved through land development as if you were, then you would have the option to do so. I believe it's up to five years, and you can even get an extension on that. So it was just a way to really build the site and master plan the site in a logical manner versus having, you know, multiple parties try to figure that out. Thank you for that clarification.
Is there some economy of scale to doing it this way, so that they're not separate entities?
There is as well, because, you know, if you have construction going on, you're already going to have oversight as well as the design process. You already have your civil engineer engaged. So, you know, if you were to expand that, they're already mobilized. You certainly get economies out of that as well.
All right, so I just want to make, sorry, but just for anyone listening, right? Because I know we've had so many residents and parents who for quite some time have been very, very keen to have the fields updated. And so this has been in the works for that. This is not a new idea, as I know you said. And then we are also looking at the school and now combining those forces. So it is not like something has just appeared as in response to resident taxpayer, parent concerns for many, quite some time for new fields.
That is correct, Dr. Henderson, yes.
I have a question about the square footage. So it says alternate program, but is it for the inclusion of Linking Learning to Life, not for the student services?
Correct. It includes the Linking Learning to Life, but not the student.
And isn't the inclusion of the Linking Learning to Life an alternative at this point? Or something the district has decided is the best path forward?
Linking Learning to Life will be included in that building. It will not be an alternate program going forward.
Yeah, that could, that's potentially in this label. We should say current program. Yeah, the final schematic design program. Correct.
I do expect that the student services part, that portion, I don't expect that that will be part of what the final program is.
And then just a couple other clarifications in this. If you remember, we did talk a little bit about HBAC and some of the other areas. So in, within this budget is the geothermal system as well as the solar-ready building. It's not a solar building, but, you know, essentially all the switchgear would be prepared for. The roof is oriented in a correct manner. Everything will be ready, you know, in case you did get grant money or some other funding mechanism to then easily do that. So it's not like an afterthought that you have to do extra rework for. The time to do that is now when you're building it. It's much easier to do that as a thought-out process versus trying to piecemeal it later.
Bill, can you just talk a little bit about with the, with the fields pieces, those, the estimation of those prices, that's if everything were selected, competition lights and all that kind of stuff?
It does include the lighting as well as, and I know none of that is approved yet. But in terms of a budgetary, yeah, I mean, we did want to give a budget for, you know, if you were to build it, these are the fully loaded costs with permitting and land development, all of that. So you'd have a good feel for that.
While we're talking about big numbers, plan a sky, would it be possible in the future to have a line item option for solar panels to be installed with the building?
Yeah, we could absolutely do that as an.
So that we see what it is as we're talking about other things potentially in and out.
That's something that can be done. Yes.
And just so I get clarification on the two different athletic options. So the first one includes revamping the baseball field and bringing the girls' softball field from Barrowfield back to the high school, both oriented in ways towards the sun that are correct with turf as well as the stadium in the football stadium, correct?
Yes.
So to go to Athletics Alternate 2 would add two more turf fields to the high school and one to SLMs. I'm assuming if we wanted to cherry pick and just say, I think two turf fields at our, at our high school are good enough. And we, but maybe we want to add one to SLMs. We could absolutely tease that out.
Yes, 100%. We just, we combined some of it just so we didn't have too many columns, but you can certainly pick and choose, and we could just rebuild that very quickly.
One last comment about the roof lines. Sorry. I know that it was a big deal when we were looking at the other location about what the outside of the building looks like. And of course, nobody wants to have like a prison ugly-looking building or anything like that. But I think when it comes to roof lines and the overall design, I would say efficiency, durability, cost efficiency in building it, maintaining it, and the durability of it long-term would weigh out over any kind of aesthetic thing that anybody would want.
Yeah, aesthetics first. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. That was my architect hat. My question was, oh, about the multi-use fields, and maybe this is a schedule question, so maybe you'll hit it as we come up. This building is going to take a long time before we see this building open. With these combined together, is there a chance that that multi-use field is available sooner than the building?
Unfortunately, no. So the reason for that is that they, everything has to go through land development at the same time, and then you would build the field. So I, we could look at some acceleration of the athletic fields, but our limiting factor is still going to be that land development piece.
Phil, let me just clarify, because the land development is the, right, we have to go through all that first. Everybody has to say yes, that we can do whatever it is that we can do. But if that is, you know, when that is done, if we're going to expect that it takes two years to do the school, right? From breaking ground till putting children in seats. If it took a year to do those fields, those fields could be done.
Yeah, they could be if you accelerate those pieces. Yes, you absolutely.
It's just the approval.
Yeah.
But the project can run concurrent.
I'm sorry. I think I misunderstood your question.
Because, you know, Jackie, the piece with, you know, the parking lot and the access, we want, we definitely want the access for the buses to come through off of Barron Road, keep them off of Rose Tree Road, have them come through the new parking lot, go on to the new school property, drop the kids off, and honestly, they go right through the back of the property to the bus yard. They're not back out in traffic again, you know, which is beneficial. So those are, at least in my mind, those are inextricably linked, you know? So when the school's ready to open, that parking lot's going to be there. The parking lot's there. There's nothing to say that we hadn't also at the same time bid out the project, you know, for what was being done for the multi-use field.
We can go on to the next one. We're going to, we're going to take a quick, have a quick discussion around Act 34. We'll be getting into this in more detail during design, during design development. We'll get into Act 34. But we wanted to take an initial look at it now and just talk a little bit about it. So for those of you who aren't familiar with Act 34, it was established in 1973 as the quote-unquote Taj Mahal Act, and it was designed to create equity across the state for new construction projects or major renovations and additions, excuse me, just additions, not the renovations. It was designed to level the costs from one district to the next so that, you know, we don't have one district spending a lot of money on a school and somebody with maybe not the same financial means getting poorer facilities. So this was really meant as a way to sort of level the playing field in terms of education, facility, design and construction. And they use a set per pupil cost to determine the Act 34 numbers that we will carry forward in, in design development. So we're going to show you a few highlights from this PlanCon document, but it is a 25-page document, so we're really only focusing on the few of the pages here. The first thing that we're talking about here is the total estimated cost of construction. And this includes not only the building costs and the site costs. It also includes design contingencies and escalation and, you know, any other additional fees, furniture fixtures and equipment of that nature, but it does not include construction contingencies. So this is, you know, a formula established by the state that we follow. So this one is the site costs, and site costs actually get subtracted from the total project costs when we're looking at the cost per student and how that all gets calculated. So this is how we figure out the site costs. The site costs include the site costs and any of fees, which would be, again, those contingencies and design fees, permitting fees. And I think it was 2014, 2015, the PDE made an allowance to let the geothermal well field, which used to be included as a part of the mechanical construction costs. They allow that to be now included as a part of the site construction costs. And there was a benefit to that in terms of how we calculate the Act 34 number. But they did that so that they could encourage more sustainable design. So that was one of the changes that they made. So then when we look here, we're calculating out the site costs, and these actually get subtracted from those total product, project costs on the previous slide to give us our maximum Act 34 cost. You can move on to the next one. Thanks, Phil. So we will revisit this when we get into DD, but this, all the stuff that you're seeing here today is based off of the schematic design numbers that we just talked about. So at this time, our Act 34 cost is 63,420,456. And the maximum, so our maximum building construction cost cannot go above that by 8% with the bids, or you would require an Act 34 hearing. So we have a threshold set here of 68,494, 68,494,000 and some change as our maximum that would require us to go into an Act 34 hearing, should the bids come in higher than our estimate. There is also another threshold that we need to be mindful of, and this one is the aggregate building expenditure cost. This is not a cost per student times the building capacity. This is calculated differently. This is not building capacity. This is Act 34 capacity. And for our building, which has a capacity of about 850 students, the Act 34 capacity is much higher, 2,500 students plus. And that is calculated differently, and that PDE wants us to include all of the spaces where instruction can occur when we're doing these building capacities. So we are looking at spaces like large group instruction, small group instruction, like media centers. Those all get capacity. So that's why that number is a lot bigger. Again, this is not building capacity, and this was done so that they could help right-size a building and set that level playing field across the state.
Can I interrupt you to ask one question? So who is determining the number of people allowed to be counted in these spaces?
PDE has a standard for each of these spaces. So you can sort of start to see them in there, but they allocate a certain number of students per class. And that is, and you may do something different in how you actually use those spaces, but PDE sets that as a standard across the state. So every person, every school district that is building a facility and following these formulas, they're all using the same class number of students per class to calculate their Act 34 numbers.
So it's wide space, not square footage?
Correct.
Yeah, and it's kind of a shame, because it's all calculated, and you'll even notice in the workbook, it's called full-time FTEs. So it's really, it's a synthetic number that they've used, and they right-size for their purposes. It really doesn't have, it doesn't really coordinate with students and cost per student at all, you know, so.
And they're, they do have thresholds for square footages, so you can't be undersized. Like, for example, they have a limit on how small a classroom can be. It still had to count for capacity.
What about oversized?
They do not set an oversized limit. But the more, the bigger the space, the more it costs to construct. And so that's why you have to take these numbers and look at them as a, as a big picture, because that will ultimately affect your construction.
Especially because it's not challenged by square footage.
Right.
It's five.
Right. Correct. Okay, so if we take that larger Act 34 capacity. Okay. So if we take that larger Act thirty num- thirty four capacity number, which is that twenty five, three, thirty two, and we multiply that by the current cost per squ- uh, cost per student that P D E allows us, then you're going to multiply that out and you can see that you're going to get a sixty five million, two hundred eighty seven, six twenty. So that cost is currently above our maximum building construction cost of sixty three million plus. So here's that second threshold. As long as our maximum building construction cost is lower than this aggregate building expenditure amount, then a referendum would not be required. So we have two thresholds to meet for Act thirty four.
And I'm sure you'll get to this and this is, I know a very basic question, but I do think there's a lot of confusion that can happen in the community about like you mentioned eighty four million would be what we're looking for. But then you're saying, you know, the expenditure we, is sixty three million and that is less than the Act thirty four. If you could just quickly address what that perceived discrepancy so that people understand, um, myself included about, um, Act thirty four and how we don't have to worry at this point about a referendum.
Right. So Act thirty four is, we subtract out the site costs because they're really trying to level set the building. Everybody's sites are different. It costs a lot different to develop. So we, they've taken that piece out of the equation. We're really looking at the cost to construct a physical building. So that's why the total project costs and the Act thirty four costs are different.
Yeah, only looking at the building only.
It's kind of like your adjusted gross.
Quite a bit of the total budget to just get to the building.
It's kind of like your adjusted gross income on your tax return. You take out all your deductions and that's what you have.
Twenty five page workbook, which is similar probably to the tax workbook you have.
Yeah, that's a good analogy.
And, and just, just to remember, we, we're just doing this check here because it's, you know, it was brought up as a concern. So we know at this point that we're in, we're in a good spot. This will actually be fully flushed out in that Act thirty four hearing as we move through schematic design. We just wanted to give a, a high level check that, yeah, we're on track. And, and I know you had gotten some feedback on that, so we just wanted to answer that question. But ha- happy to answer more questions about this as well.
So, so, so I, I'm still not understanding that sixty three million is what, is a calculation of what it will cost us to build this school, this, the, based on the minus all of it. So that's not the, that's not a, a limit. That's not a state calculation. That's what you're saying. This particular construction is going to cost.
A- a- according to the way P D E calculates.
Right.
So, so that's the, that's the building, the building cost.
Right.
Yes, for this building.
For this building and their threshold for referendum is slightly higher than that. So we don't have to.
Correct.
And their threshold for what a building of this size, of this capacity size, whichever, whichever one it is, is sixty eight? Is that what you're saying? Sixty eight million?
That's, that's what, if you exceed that, you have to have a second Act thirty four hearing.
Okay.
So.
Eight percent.
Right.
Right.
An eight percent cushion, right? Because there are things that could change between the initial piece and then actually the builder being in there and, and building, right?
Right.
Blocked together and all that.
So this is our current estimate. It could change by the time the project's over, it could be more.
It could fluctuate a little bit. Yes.
And, and Ken, that fluctuation is also why when we talk about it's going to cost eighty four million dollars is what we are budgeting for. Cause the contingency money is in there. There's that, that growth in case things change in terms of cost.
Right.
That's where, you know, that comes from.
Right. And that's all baked into that maximum building construction cost of sixty three million. We include all of those. You know, we're at a point in, in design right now, but there are still things that we need to flush out. So there are, you know, there's money sort of built into that estimate to allow us to flush out the building and work through the details and, and capture all those things. We also consider escalation because we know construction costs today are going to be different when we bid it. So that is also included in that sixty three million.
This is also a good backstop from having design get out of control. Not that that's anyone's goal, but it's, it's a good chance for the community to understand when we're flushing out those details, they're not going to be like, hey, let's just make this whatever we want. We have this as a backstop.
That's right.
So we cannot go over this. Can you, um, I have a question about the Act thirty four. So you said a second Act thirty four hearing. Is there an Act thirty four hearing for every project? Or there's some point along the path that P D E looks at this and approves our building?
So every, every new construction must go through an Act thirty four hearing. Every major addition has to go through an Act thirty four hearing. If you're just renovating a building or you're doing an addition that's smaller than like twenty percent of the total building size, then you don't have to do Act thirty four. But every new building and every major addition does need to go through this process. And so, yes, we, this will be, um, you know, we're scheduled, I think we're scheduled probably for around November for our hearing. Um, and then once we move forward with that, yeah, then that's, that's the, the approval process through the state.
And I think you had a, a good comment and I want to make sure everybody who may be listening is that there is contingency built into this because anybody who's ever done a project at their house knows they always go over budget because they don't build contingencies in, but this budget already has contingencies built in, correct?
Correct. Yeah. If we, if I go back to the budget, you'll see a, you'll see a hard cost of what we expect the bids to be. There's also contingency. There's an escalation in there because we're expecting costs to continue to escalate. So all of those add up to the eighty four million dollar budget.
So just, just one final clarification. I'm still a little confused. I, my assumption, not knowing anything about Act thirty four, was that there was a, there was a dollar amount that you shouldn't exceed, like a standard objective dollar amount. And that if we came in lower than that, then we'd be fine. And if we came in higher than, so is, is there, and the object, is that sixty five?
That's the sixty five.
And the sixty five is not based off of the sixty three. It's come at independently.
That's the number that like, it's hard to see, but the up in the upper right hand corner, there's that, that boxed area.
Yeah.
That is the Act thirty four capacity that we've calculated on the previous slide that shows two thousand five hundred thirty two students.
Right.
Times the twenty five thousand, seven hundred eighty five dollars, which is the current amount that the state has set as the pupil cost limit.
Right.
So we multiply those two together and that's what we get, how we get the sixty five billion and then that sets that threshold.
Thank you. We're doing that again.
Sorry. And I, this is confusing and it's hard to explain. So I appreciate the questions to get the clarity. Yeah. And that, I mean, we don't know what that number is going to be, you know, when we, although this number will probably be this number. So we're going to be doing this in, in November.
The building as.
They do change it.
Is the maximum sixty five using this workbook. So you're right. And then we're under right now is just calculated at sixty three. So, you know, nothing, no, no act, uh, no referendum needed. That's really the, the kind of test, if you will.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'm sorry, it is convoluted. It's, uh, it's an old program and it really hasn't modernized with building construction or other thing. And it's very confusing. It was originally built for when they were actually issuing money to somehow, you know, get it a little more equitable to the districts. They stopped doing that quite a few years ago and this still remains unfortunately. Yeah. No money, but all strings.
Yeah.
Just, sorry, my, my opinion.
Gotcha.
Uh, sorry. So, um, if you remember, we, we had done quite a bit of surveying after the open house and we left that survey open. The last time we visited, uh, we did not have all the response. We had about a hundred and thirty, I want to say. We did have two hundred and seventy total, uh, completions of that survey. Uh, six hundred and forty three responded, meaning they could have answered one or the other or just opened it. And it's hard to tell that. Uh, but I do know two hundred and seventy completed the survey. Two questions. What questions do you have about the K one center? And then the other question is what advice do you have, uh, as when they move through the, develop this? Um, the first piece, um, the way the A I does this, uh, I did, I spoke about this before, but it takes all of it. It aggregates it into a couple of different themes. Looks for kind of, uh, big broad themes and they create kind of three buckets, if you will. Kind of one side bucket, another side, and then what's common. Uh, in the, in the A I program, it also drops out the top five themes. So when you ask about the, what questions you have, you see a lot of, a lot of people concerned about traffic. You know, traffic, the, with the location of the building and, and how that's going to impact the, the area. And that would be, you know, we would expect that anytime that there's going to be a major construction project, people are going to be concerned about that. And they want more information. That's part of the whole land development process, you know, where we actually unpack all of that. We go through all of the processes and we, we, we talk about all those things and mediate any issues between the district and, you know, the homeowners, et cetera. On the other side, we saw a tremendous amount of support for the new K one building. So, I mean, when you looked at that, people were very excited about offering full day K. They were very excited about a new facility for the youngest learners in the district. And they were just showing a lot of support. So there weren't really questions. There were more statements. Uh, and then the common ground was everyone just believes that, that good effective planning, uh, is important in this process. If you look at the themes on the right, you know, it's traffic and location. People are interested in the educational model and Dr. Malash has spoken to that several times as there's no, no right or wrong way to configure schools. But there are, there are things that work for each district. People are interested about budgets and costs, which I would expect at this early piece. Logistics such as start and end times bus routes, um, project timelines and outcomes, all the things that we're developing. So, you know, good questions and we're giving answers as we develop them. What advice would you have? Again, traffic, I'm sorry, uh, financial transparency comes up. That was traffic before, but these new results change that. So people are looking for financial transparency in terms of, you know, how much is this going to cost? How's that's going to impact the budget? Uh, all of those things are being developed as you roll this forward in your budgeting process. Uh, people are also recommending, uh, to allow the community has a little bit more engagement in terms of as this moves forward, having feedback. Uh, just by doing this, you are getting feedback. And I think, you know, as we hear feedback, we're trying to respond to those things. And that will be going, ongoing through land development. Uh, everybody believes that inclusive planning, uh, will be important, including, you know, the most important stakeholders and students and such. So not substantially different than what we had before, but this is the complete package. We rolled this up into a summary and sent it to Dr. Malash for additional, you know, uh, for him to look at additional detail on all of these, uh, key themes. So looking at the proposed timeline, um, we have looked at this and kind of put everything together as a total package. Not that you've approved anything with the athletics yet, but we were, we were planning to, uh, you know, if you approve, move through land development as if you would do that to give you optionality. Uh, and that does extend the timeline a little bit in terms of the permitting and approval process. So you'll see, uh, the permitting of approval moves all the way out to September of twenty twenty six. I'll stop it. I'll start at the top. So let me, let me start from the top and move down. So right now we're in schematic design. We'll be ending that here at the end of June, moving into what's called design development. That piece will go from June to October of twenty twenty five. There'll be many updates to the board, uh, to the public, uh, as we go through that. Uh, we spoke a little bit about the Act thirty four hearing that's scheduled right now for November of twenty twenty five. We'd have all the information necessary. You do that after design development. Uh, so we'd have all the information necessary to finalize that. We're looking at construction documents in May of twenty twenty six. Permitting and approval is going to go all the way to September of twenty twenty six. You can do some things in parallel. So we'd be bidding in June of twenty sixth for approval in the August of twenty six timeline, giving our construction from September to August of twenty eight. And then basically move in and open in August of twenty eight. So it's, we've eaten up a little bit of that, that play that we had where we started in the springtime and to the summertime. And now we're, we're kind of at the end of summer. This is common for projects such as this, uh, you know, as you develop them forward.
The approval before the hearing, who's doing the approval, the approving there of that Act thirty four resolution?
That's us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Phil, just talk like the, the permitting and approvals that started, are starting now, and then we expect to finish in September twenty six. Can you just give just a basic overview of to whom do we have to present information and they have to provide approval?
Yeah. So there's, there's actual multiple different entities when you're going through a permitting process. You know, we've worked in with the township, but you also be working with, uh, county conservation district for stormwater. There's probably, you know, there's going to be traffic. There's going to be all the different permits you will need. Uh, the big one right now will probably be the big change that we have right now is that the existing property was draining towards a lower quality water area watershed, whereas the high school property is draining towards a higher quality shed, uh, Ridley Creek. It just adds extra complexity to the permitting process and just adds a little bit of time to that. Besides that, we'll be working through the land development process with the township while we're actually doing in parallel some of these other permits. Uh, you know, county and state permits. Not sure if that's what you're.
So, uh, lower quality shed, what does that mean?
So anything draining to Ridley Creek is, it's a waterway of high quality. That's just determined as that versus kind of a, a stream or something that, that doesn't, I don't know how they determine which is low and high quality, but I know that Ridley Creek is one of them. This is definitely a good move for Gus. Can bring him to talk a little bit. But I do know that the existing property, uh, drains into a small creek that runs in between your property and the property that the church is on. And that stream, I guess, is of lower quality, not a stream that's protected by a different level of classification.
So th- does that make it easier or harder to get a permit for it?
The higher quality makes a harder permit.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's, that's the piece that once we move on to the, on to the high school property, that high school property does drain onto the higher quality stream, which is Ridley Creek. So that does make it a little bit harder. It just, they, you need to go through a couple of extra steps to get that approved. And you will obviously do everything environmentally correct, et cetera. So there's no, no concern about that, but you know, they still have a little bit more certification to make sure all of that has happened.
So you mentioned the, um, the lower quality stream that goes in between our border and the proposed church site.
Correct.
Will there have to be some sort of degree of coordination between us and the church on their site for some of these plans at all?
No, there's no, no coordination. There is a setback from, from any waterway that's already been included, uh, in the design process. So we're already kind of working outside of those areas. Uh, next steps, um, you know, we're, we're looking at, looking for and I guess approve the updated K one center building budget that would continue us moving forward over the summer to continue our design work. As well as I, I, I'm sure there's some conversation about what to do with the athletic field. So we would just need some determination of you want us to put that in the land development package, whether you have, you know, essentially approved it or not, if you want that optionality. Uh, and then the last piece is authorizing the design team. That, that's kind of inherent in the first two pieces.
Yes. Thank you, Phil, uh, and Jennifer. Great. A lot of information and great information. And for the board, as Phil just kind of went through, you know, we will look for the board to adopt a resolution next Thursday approving that, that revised budget and the revised space, um, you know, the hundred and twenty five thousand square feet and the eighty four million dollars. You know, as, as you all know, board adopted a resolution earlier in this year, uh, earlier February or March. You know, for the eighty one and a half million dollars. And we've talked about each of the months that as we have refined, uh, what the program looks like and, and ultimately what it will look like on that space and in that site, that in June we would have a final recommendation and that's where we're going to be locked in. The piece about the fields, you know, when, when we had Hugh out here from L A Sport, the work that, um, because again, these projects have been running concurrently. But at this point, I, as I, I think I've said previously, are inextricably linked, uh, in terms of, of what goes on. A lot of really good recommendations, you know, from L A Sport, um, the multi-use that sport complex, baseball, softball and a multi-use field, soccer, hockey, lacrosse, uh, all being synthetic turf. You know, places to sit, batting cages, uh, all that kind of stuff being there. And then the parking lot, you know, that also will provide parking for after school, uh, activities for the sports that are there. It'll provide parking. We do not have enough parking for our students, right? Juniors, a lot of them have driver's license and, uh, typically are unable to be able to park on campus. The reality of kids traveling back and forth to school just looks differently in twenty twenty five, you know, than it did in, in nineteen eighty five. That provides a, a great relief, you know, to Pencrest High School. And again, one of the big things is we've gone back and forth and have met with folks from the community. You know, talked with, uh, some of the discussion with, with council folk, you know, is about what's traffic going to look like on Rose Tree Road? This allows us to keep all of the school buses off of Rose Tree Road, you know, and coming in, coming through the property while. This allows us to keep all of the school buses off of Rose Tree Road, you know, and coming in, coming through the property while, you know, the high school day is in session. Dropping the children off, um, you know, the early childhood building, uh, and then staying on the Pencrest property, never going back out in traffic. And parking in the bus yard, you know, before the, the late day runs are made. There are a lot of options with the athletic fields and in a few minutes, you know, we're going to have our, our finance folks come up and talk about what's it mean to borrow that money? You know, what are those options that are there? A number of, of times as we've had these presentations discussed it, we've talked about 130 million dollars. You know, the, the 80 plus million dollars for this school, and then the additional capital projects, including the fields. But additional capital projects as we, you know, redo classrooms as, you know, we're doing five, Mike Nolan. Five science rooms over at the high school this year. We have eight more that need to be done. Just redoing the instructional spaces. That's going to happen across the district. These spaces need to be redone. We need to be able to provide for how education is being delivered. Again, the greatest resource that we have in our school district are the human beings, the human resource, staff members and the children and the families, you know, who make up this educational community. The facilities need to be able to support what it is that we expect and what we have them do. So the guys, you know, when they come and talk about finances, we'll talk about what that looks like. All the decisions do not need to be made about the athletic fields right now. But we will ask the board to move forward with next week is that multi-sport complex, the synthetic turf and the parking lot. And then as well to do the, the stadium field has to be redone. There's discussion about field as Phil talked about, you know, here at Springton Lake, uh, to put in a synthetic turf in, you know, where the new track is being constructed. You know, and then those two fields, you know, fields two and three, which would be for further discussion. Same thing about lights. I think that's a later discussion for the board to have. Because we need to move forward on the other ones. Believe that, you know, the best piece right now is, is looking at the stadium, that multi-use complex and tying it together with what we're doing with the K one center. Carleen.
Just a question on timing, um, the stadium. I, I know we said that the, um, the new fields, the newly constructed turf fields probably wouldn't be ready for use until 2028. But the stadium itself.
That the stadium has to be rebid, has to be done next year, right? This next summer, right? So we will bid it out. Next winter, looking at Dennis, next winter sometime, but that, that will be done regardless of what happens with this, that field has to be redone.
Right. So that's a separate and apart cost than what's even being presented here, correct?
No, that's included in here.
The, the, the Pencrest Stadium is included in this.
Pencrest is not.
Oh, it's not. Apologies.
It's just the multi-blocks.
Thank you, Bill. The new stuff. Thank you. Good clarification. End of life, it's.
So 10, 10 years that.
Yeah. 10 years is what the expectation is. And that one is. This is the 11th season, the 11th year that we're coming on. So it's just the end, the expectation, the end of the useful life of it.
Thank you.
True.
And at some future meeting, are we going to have a larger discussion about the turf?
We are, because we, there has to be a discussion, especially for that new complex about what is it? What's the, the turf system that we're going to use, right? What's going to go in there? What does that look like? There are different materials that are available. They're, how they're doing it today is different than how they did it a dozen years ago, when that initial field was put in. So that absolutely part of our discussion. Well, the guys come and present, you know, about these are what the options are and this is what it means. All right, Phil and Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I didn't see any hands raised. Okay. Um, yes, go ahead.
Well, just let you know, I'm going to repeat what you said, so just keep that in mind.
Okay. I'm a retired educator, 23 years. I retired in 2017. I live on Huntington Hills Lane. Right off of Rose Street. My, it's a dog light to paint him. I have three objections to this particular idea for a K one. Number one, as an educator, I think K one doesn't really have sound. Educational value to it. I have friends who have grandchildren in this, in the Springfield School District and their kids don't like it. They don't like it that they don't, they're not in their regular school with their other kids when they go back to the elementary school in second grade. They're not happy with that. That's number one. I'll let you repeat whatever I say.
There's a comment about the.
All right. There's a comment about the K to one center questioning whether it is of sound educational value.
Because the kids don't like that. The, the people I've talked to that have grandkids in the Springfield School District don't like it.
Okay. I understand. It's just that we have dead air. So if you could get to the point.
Number two, I, I live on Huntington Hills Lane, which is right off of Rose Tree Road. I still have, have looked at all of these things that where you say this, like this entrance way for the parents to come in is off the Rose Tree Road. I can't place it and I drive Rose Tree Road probably six to seven times a day. I can't place where you put it through unless you go directly through this smelly property.
So there's a question about where exactly the entrance would be on Rose Tree Road?
My, oh, my third point is if we're so intent on actually going forward with the K one. I disagree with the location because of not only the traffic issues, but. I hope most of you are aware that they're going to take out the clover leaf going over 352. That's going to come out and they're also proposing a traffic circle at Baron Road and 452. That's for you.
There's also a question about, uh, traffic issues. The issue of the clover leaf, I guess this is with PennDOT and, uh. What is that? The traffic circle that may be put in? Okay. At Baron and 452. Okay. Thank you.
My fourth point is if we're so intent on going forward with the K one, why not put it at the Franklin Station property? There's tons of property out there.
There's a, a suggestion of, uh, the K to one center at the, the Franklin.
Franklin Station.
Franklin Station property. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're right next to police station. We have a daycare center there.
All right. Another comment question?
I went online and looked at the study. I was, I wasn't really understanding how we're gaining fields. With putting parking lots and loop roads and stuff in, maybe I'm just not getting it.
Right. There's a question about the athletic fields and how we're gaining additional fields and parking. I'm just asking, is that it? Okay.
More parking in and we're.
Okay.
Like how does that lend itself to gaining athletic fields? And maybe I was not understanding it correctly.
So we're actually gaining competitive fields as opposed to field of just grass that are not typically used as competitive fields. Re-alignment. Oh no, we're, we're gaining an additional softball field. That's there. It's moving where soccer is typically is, has been played for a number of years on grass. It's realigning where that is. It's going to be turned, turned a different direction. Where the parking will be is not currently used as a competitive athletic field. It is a grass field that's out there. There's a lot of grass that's there that is not used.
Where field one is.
Now, field one is all the way up top where there's a softball field.
Is that what'd be something?
It's going to be a soft, continue to be a softball field. It'll be used for competition. So there's questions about is that if, if I'm talking about field one. And field one has a softball field and I believe the, a practice field that they've used up there for soccer and, and field hockey. But once the second softball field is open, they'll play softball up there, have competitive games.
Those from Rose Tree Road.
Will people be accessing those fields from Rose Tree Road? Not in a design that, that, that we have right now. That certainly could be a future discussion with the folks from Middletown Township. But we're looking at making access from our parking and from our lots. There'll be hard surfaces that people can get up to those fields.
All right.
Drop off on Rose Tree Road. I just, A, I don't think that's still good because everyone's going to drop their kids off. Like we're beluding ourselves if we say they're taking the bus because they're not. That's at least like probably half of them will not. And then B, if they go on a barren road, I mean, I appreciate the thought, but they're just going to go right around the corner down painter and on Rose Tree again.
So there's a, just a comment about the. The entrance and where people will actually, what roads people will actually use. And just sort of a question about, you know. How effective our design is in terms of navigating traffic?
Okay.
Teresa, can I just, I, I want to confirm something about her question. I think it's that some of the fields that we have are not well-used or used at all because they lack access. So some of the fields that are going to be worked on and providing these roads are actually going to be providing access to fields that aren't currently used very much. Is that correct?
It is Shelley. One of them, one of them is the softball field at field one that is, that is asked about. It's not currently used as a competitive field. It's used occasionally for different things during the year, but it's not used as a competitive field. Our, our softball teams varsity and JV currently play over at Brawl in Media Borough. And I just wanted just a, a couple of things about the initial questions and comments. We're very excited about the, the K one concept and what that means educationally in terms of literacy acquisition. Child development and what we can provide for those children. I've had the opportunity to talk to a, a lot of parents and a lot of folks in the community and our educators. We are really excited about what it's going to mean and the difference that it's going to provide for children, for families and for our, our elementary schools. Will it take some getting used to? It's different. It's, it's definitely a change. There's no question about that, but we are very excited about that. Concerns with PennDOT, you know, there, there are a number of PennDOT projects that are ongoing. And, you know, one that even will impact this property. You know, with what it's going to look like, how they're going to redo Rose Tree Road to come into the light, you know, going into the Granite Run property. You know, and, and that's all scheduled right now. That they're saying that's 2030. Whether that actually comes through in 2030, we don't know. But, you know, that's a, that's where we are. But yes, we are, we're really excited. And why not put it at Franklin Station? We don't own any property at Franklin Station. I'm not aware of any property that is for sale at Franklin Station. I know that there is a, a debate going on about property over there and the, the contingency to build a warehouse that's there. We selected the property because we own it. It's zoned appropriately. It does not need to be rezoned. The Franklin Station property would need to be rezoned, even if, if we were to find somebody that was selling it, purchase it, and then to go through that process. This makes the best sense. It's fiscally responsible. It meets the needs of a, a district that's continuing to grow. It allows us to meet the needs of not just the size, uh, but also to enhance the educational academic opportunities for children.
Sorry. I'm sorry. We, we, um, we answered your question. I, I see. We have someone else. You have a question or comment?
Well, what does that mean?
Well, no, the student services is not going to be in that section. There was an earlier discussion about it, but it is not in this plan.
Is it, is the question is what is student services? Is that what you were wondering?
Student services is one of the departments we have in the school oversees special education, 504 counselors, school psychologists, school nurses. All of those services and things that are provided to children that are beyond just the traditional academic or curricular side. There have been initial discussions about locating offices in the new building. And because of the, the, the shift in space, we will not be locating them in that building.
All right. All right. Could you just wait one second? Um, cause we, is this an addition, a new question? Okay.
Actually said that somebody at one of the paid good ones you met with said they wouldn't do this again if they had to do it again. So what happened with that comment? Like, I just want to know why, like, one of you said it.
Okay. There's a question about something a board member said. I have no idea about that. So. Okay. Anybody? Okay. I don't know. We have tape. So I mean, if maybe you want to send an email if you find the, the tape on YouTube.
But you just bought the land back in 2021 with this plan in mind. So, and I don't understand because we originally sold that mansion with Riddle. And Riddle didn't even use it for all these years because I don't think it's good.
So I want to clarify, we did not actually purchase this with this in mind. When we bought this property, we were fully engaged with the Edgemont property. We bought this as potential insurance because how often does land come up for sale? As we all know, never. And then we're stuck in situations. So it came up, it was attached to one of our properties. It seemed like the thing to do so that we would have it in case something happened in the future. It just so happened that future happened much sooner than any of us expected. We had no idea that this would happen when we purchased that property.
Thank you, Jackie. All right. Thank you, guys. All right, let's, uh, let's move on. Next up, we have debt financing. Raymond James.
Thank you, Dr. Nap, Dr. Napson-Williams. Excited that we have our two, two of our finance folks here with us. Ken Phillips and Brad Remig are here to provide an update on the financing options. We've had a number of discussions. I feel like the, the team has been here quite a bit over the last six months, which is, uh, has been nice. So I'm going to turn it over to the guys. They have a number of things to show you and, and then some discussion for the board to have for next steps for direction.
Tap this.
When you see the green. Tap the light on itself.
Got it. Ally sends her best. She had elementary graduation this evening. So, um, so you're stuck with Brad and I. At our last meeting on May 8th, we talked about several different plans going forward. What we need to do under Act one, you know, you're in the process. You just heard, uh, obviously your architectural firm go through the, their updates. And we talked about, uh, obtaining some money this year toward. Probably in the next three or four months, as you start to go through continuing planning stages. You have some money from the 18 issue that you're using for projects and that are, you know, is going to be used. So we wanted to get some seed money. So, um, there is a resolution. We talked about the lawyers that, you know, we had your approval to go ahead and speak with the attorneys. We spoke with the attorneys and at your June 12th meeting, there will be a resolution on the table for a $15 million of borrowing. That's all. We're not going to do 80 or 130 or anything like that. Because later this year, probably going into the winter of next year. We gave you several different options on how to fund it, whether we use level debt financing, wraparound financing. And in the meantime, in the last three weeks, we've also reviewed with the administration, some other ideas that we don't need to worry about tonight. Cause it's not important that we will talk about those ideas as we continue to go through the process. As you continue to make the, the educational decisions with respect to what the project's going to look like. Okay? So very simply, the resolution that will be put on the table next week. Put together by your legal team. Okay. It's not Brad and I, we're the finance team. It's, it's the legal team. We'll authorize the incurrence of debt. It will say 16,500,000. We're only going to borrow 15 million. But in order to file at the state of Pennsylvania, you have to basically, uh, give them some cushion. Okay. And we want some flexibility in how we're going to structure the debt. So we have structured with the legal team. We have put, given them the parameters for the financing. And that will give us again flexibility when we meet with you, probably. I'm going to say in the late, late fall. It may even be around the Act 34 hearing, but we really don't even need the structure technically for that. But probably by, uh, February of next year, we will want you to have made the decisions, final decisions. On what you want the structure to look like. So we had total flexibility now with respect to this resolution that you're going to be asked to adopt on Thursday night. Okay?
My only comment was, as Ken mentioned, that it's 16 and a half million for state law. The intent is to borrow 15. And the reason we're suggesting that you do it this year is if you borrow $15 million or less in a calendar year. You're determined to be what's called a small issuer. So any interest you earn on that money for a three-year period, you can keep. Typical rule is if you borrow money tax exempt and you earn a higher rate of return on the investments, you have to give the money back. But part of the intent of the 15, small issuer, whatever you earn for three years, you get to keep. That's part of that first strategy. But part of the intent of the 15, small issuer, whatever you earn for three years, you get to keep. That's part of that first strategy.
So with your nod of the heads or whatever, we need to give tonight, we'll contact the legal team because they need to advertise. Okay, so there'll be an advertisement in the newspaper that you'll be incurring debt on June 12th and by resolution. And that's pretty much it. That gives everyone the ability to go ahead and start the financing of the first 15.
I would say I'm comfortable with that based on your last presentation and where it looks like we're headed.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the administration team here for our conversations over the last 30 days. We have some good ideas that we want to bring before you in the next couple of months. Again, not necessarily this evening. But I think we have some good options for you as you not only plan this, but then look at, you know, the things coming down the road. Any questions? It's a legal document, you know, a lot of reading, not very exciting, but it's just basically giving the full faith and credit backing of Roastery for the financing.
Quick question. I know I should know the answer to this. You guys gave a really great presentation on why we're in a good position to borrow because we have not borrowed any money in quite a long time, and we are almost at the end of all of our debt service. And also what it means for the average taxpayer and how this will impact them. And I know the impact is very little because we haven't borrowed money in such a long time. So is that presentation somewhere that the public can access? Because I think it's really important information. I think it's going to come up again and again by other people.
It is.
Yeah.
Including all the calculations about what it means for the average taxpayer and all that kind of stuff?
Yes, all that information is on the website. If you look on the front page of the website, there's a link that goes to the school board presentations. Click that, it'll open up a new page, scroll down, and you'll be able to find.
Be super clear. Borrowing this money is not an impact to the individual taxpayer. It is an impact to our overall operating budget, not the individual taxpayer.
Correct. And, but I just want to, I know that.
Make sure the way we're talking about.
Correct. And I know that the new school and the financing and this particular tranche is not necessarily directly tied to the new school. But there's a long-term plan that was recommended, and I think it's really important that the long-term plan, in conjunction with all the discussions about the new school, should be front and center for everybody to find super easily.
Any other questions for the guys?
Okay, if not, we appreciate it. We'll be in touch with the legal team, and that'll be on your calendar for next week.
We may have a question or comment from the audience.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'll have to check the legal team. It's the local paper. Okay?
Delaware County, the Delaware County Times. Delaware County Times. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we will move to the capital projects update.
Dr. Napson Williams next coming up to the table is Mike Nolan from our facilities and Dennis Seeny, who does our construction management. Gentlemen.
We're about a little over a week away from some major activity when school starts. School out, excuse me. We have been doing some work over the last month and a half, but it's going to get much more intense that every, every single school has a major project this summer. Every single school has a major project this summer. To go through them quickly, the upgrades for lighting at Pencrest, the fixtures are in, I'm told, and they'll be starting soon as school is out next Monday. Yep, Friday, Monday. Window replacements and skylights, I'm told the window delivery is sometime this week, hopefully tomorrow. But again, they will be starting next week also. The skylight's still in fabrication. That's a big item that'll probably come in maybe in July. The track replacement, we have drawings have been revised. Administrative review by Conservation District is in progress. We expect to get comments back probably the end of June for the track. At that point, hopefully, we can go out to bid in early July. I still think we probably should count on early fall construction for that track. Glenwood and Roastery, HVAC, they've been working second shift, and that will change starting next week. Air conditioning's moving along just fine. No issues with equipment. Springton Lake, if anybody's been out there to see it, we have the foundations are in for the new addition, and the toilet rooms are framed out, and the plumbing has been roughed in for the toilet rooms. The furniture has been ordered for the cafeteria. Pencrest High School, Indian Lane, again, that's Consumer Family Science TV studio and the five science rooms in the Eiffel at Indian Lane. Furniture, I think I'm a little bit ahead of the game here. Furniture has not been ordered yet, but it's in the process of being ordered. Shop drawings are in progress and construction again as soon as school lets out. And our last air conditioning project, which is summer 2026, is for media and Indian Lane, and we're in the design phase there. You'll see as it's coming up, a pre-purchase of some major equipment that needs to be approved tonight. But bidding for that is scheduled for the fall of 2025, construction 2026.
Will the track construction here at Springton impact football season for the kids here?
About a month later.
Yeah, it does look that way. I've been in contact with Caitlin Judge here and the other entities that rent our property to kind of give them the heads up already. But yeah, it does look like it may impact football here. We are going to line a football field for them to practice on a different area. So, you know, they can practice, and Caitlin's also going to talk to Chip Hollinger about maybe having some games over there. So we are working through that. No problem.
Any questions on project status?
We also have, like Dennis said, we had to pre, you have a question?
I think there's one more proposal for me, correct? Colonial Electric Supply? This is, I just discussed the pre-purchase of some major equipment. We want to do this under co-stars so that we don't have to go under the contract because it's a really long lead item. So this is a direct purchase for a main distribution panel. This is for Media Elementary 2026 capital project for air conditioning. It's a, yeah, exactly. It is a long lead item, so.
Yeah, to add to that, yeah, so 25, 20 to 25 week lead time on that, so that is ordered now, right?
That will be approved tonight, hopefully, and ordered, yes.
Yep, so we can move forward next summer with that project. We also have some renewal contracts, pretty much the same every year. I can go through them real quick. Alberta Energy for building automation system for Springton Lake Glenwood and Media Elementary. We will be switching over to Johnson Controls with our new projects. So that's just to get us by for the time being. Syntas Fire Protection, again, same thing every year. They come in and inspect all of our fire systems every summer. Oasis Water Treatment, they come in every month, some every other month to make sure our hot water boiler systems and our chillers are operating off the standard, and the water's good for that. Mainline Pools, I'm on the phone with them daily, keeping that pool running, running good, so they're.
And is this a new vendor?
Mainline Pools? No, they are not.
All right.
They, they are the vendor that we, that when I got here, we're using and we're continuing to use.
They're the same vendor we've had for like the last 10 years?
Yes. Well, I can't speak to 10 years, but when I arrived here, that's who we were using.
So they were the vendor that was here when the filters failed and hadn't been replaced and?
Yeah, I kind of ask that same.
He's just telling y'all, he hasn't been here that long. You gotta ask somebody else that question.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it's a serious question. We didn't have a pool here for almost 20 years or 15 years or whatever because it drained and we couldn't find the source of the leak. So we had no pool here. And the new pool opened, what, 11 years ago, 12 years ago?
Oh, I understand. It's a serious question, but he just doesn't have the answer.
Yeah, I could definitely find that answer out for you.
It would be important because I will tell you that that pool didn't just have a problem last year, it had a problem ever since it opened with murky water, burning skin, respiratory problems and things like that. So if it wasn't proper, if they weren't properly maintaining it from the get-go, what are they going to do differently moving forward?
I must say that the pool's operating properly now. We did spend a decent amount of money to get it that way, and Mainline Pools did do that. So as of right now, I mean, they haven't, they haven't been a problem.
And I will say that, you know, Mike led the charge back in December and into January. You all recall when we had the issues and we could not use the pool. We were out of the pool for a month.
Yeah.
We had, we had structural failure of the pump system that needed to be replaced. So Mike has led that and has been intimately involved over the course of these six months to see where we are. But we'll find out. I'll get information for the board by Tuesday-ish or so next week about the history.
It would be good to know what happened because it was such a colossal failure of a brand-new, very expensive capital project that we made, and people complained about it for years. So how, where did things go wrong? Was it on our end? Was it on Mainline Pool's end? How did things go so wrong? I do appreciate everybody fixing the problem, but certainly, you know, you don't want to necessarily reward someone who didn't necessarily do the proper thing in the past.
And we're not sure who actually did it. I think that's important to underscore. So when we get that information, that'll be important.
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was a 10-year service that may have been overlooked that we took care of to change everything in the filter. That and a couple valves that we had replaced a few months back. So once, I think we got that all under control, everything, all the chemicals and everything started doing what they're supposed to do. We got the proper flow to the pool. I think that was the main issue. So.
Well, and this is for an annual contract. Would it be possible to discuss more of a monthly contract with them as sort of like a, you know, while we're making sure that we're still satisfied with their service rather than sort of engage them for a full year?
Sure. I also, there's another company that we use for our lifeguards, IM Pools, Ted Woolery, and I use him, not only, we use him for lifeguards, but I also use him as a very, I think, trustworthy opinion. I actually had a price, we have a leak on the pump right now, and I got a price from Mainline Pools, and I also got a price from Ted, and I'm going with Ted. Because even though we have a service contract with them, that doesn't mean we have to use them for everything we do. So I am going with IM Pools for that repair. Mainline Pools, part of their contract is to come in, test the chemicals. That doesn't mean I have to use them for everything. They're just, they come once a month, they check on everything, and then as far as any other repair, I can get someone else to do that. Yeah, what, I think when we had all those problems a few months back, I talked to multiple vendors about the issues, and I did have Mainline do it. But that's not without doing the homework to make sure that we're doing the right thing to get that fixed. So, yeah, I could definitely look into, you know, maybe a monthly contract or, you know, but again, like I said, I think for them to come in, they're coming in tomorrow, excuse me, we have to do a couple of things. But I spoke to Mr. Woolery to get his opinion too, so, you know, it's all about keeping, keeping the right contacts, right? So. Any other questions on the pool? Also, we have CM3 who does our service on our chiller at Springton Lake. Mardenley Industrial Power, who does our generator service monthly. I believe that's it. That's all I got right now. Thank you.
No more questions. All right, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is for the Seeny Construction Services. So we look to approve the agreement with Dennis Seeny, who is, his, it's a 2.8% increase from our current year, but just what we've noted every year is he's never gone up to the total of his scope of work and estimated maximum fee. So we would have that on the agenda for next week. Next, revisiting Bus Patrol. So back in December, we talked about Bus Patrol and how they would like to start collections. And then we sent out, I think I sent out like a, it could be considered a lengthy email with like answering some of the questions that the board has. So we are just revisiting. I just need to know, are we fine with moving forward with collections? Or do we want to tell them no on collections? Either, either way.
I know we, you sent the board additional information, and we got something from, I think it was the local police.
Police Department, yeah.
Yeah, Upper Providence, that provided some more detail about it. So anybody have any questions or comments? Because it, I felt a little better about the additional information.
I agree. I mean, again, I think what's the point of having it if we're not collecting on it? So I'm all in favor of collecting on it.
Okay. Everybody, then we'll, I'll just reach out to them and then they'll start that process.
All in favor of collecting, but I'm also still concerned about the level of disregard for the tickets this past year and what, if anybody has proposed anything to help with that, because that's crazy.
The level of people passing.
Bus, that's what I'm saying. That's what I meant.
And that is, that is a concern. I mean, I'm wondering, I mean, for our community, maybe there needs to be something pushed out if possible. I mean, I think it's, it's clearly a larger issue, and I'm not saying it's, you know, our students or it's some, it's people in this community. Some people and people driving around it. Maybe some, we could push something out to make people more aware. I think that would be important because it was, it was like, really?
It's a lot, and there are some key, I mean, the report identified specific locations where these things are happening. Maybe there's a way to, to sort of put up signage in those areas of warnings or something, you know, that people are being, I don't know, something that would be proactive to get that under control because that's really, it's dangerous. I mean, I don't mind the revenue, but it's dangerous and it's.
Mr. Dennis, we'll work with Barbara Wilson as we get ready for the opening of the new school year to do a campaign to make sure that that's out, remind folks about what the rules are, where it is. We can have conversation. In fact, I can add it to the list. Mr. Harrison, when we do the tabletop exercises with the first responders and the folks from the different municipalities, just to see what else can we do with those hot-button areas where we see more issues. We can do that twofold going into 25, 26 academic year.
And I think reminders about what the rules are, just because, you know, it's been a long time since I was 16 and took my driver's test. And I know one of the big hotspots was on the four-lane section of 252 in front of Rose Tree Park, and a member of my family was reeducated on what the laws after receiving one of those tickets. So it was very educational. So if we could remind everybody what the rules are, I think that would also be helpful.
Yeah, that's what I was saying about providing information to the students and the public. Just, you know, hey, you know, just remember, you know, you studied that book and this is in here. And whatever needs to be included, so people are aware that it's just, we're just not doing it to do it, that this is a serious issue. Yeah.
Next, so PSBA delegates is a little earlier this year, so we need to select three voting delegates. It's also not in Mechanicsburg this year. It's at Kalahari, I believe, yes. So I need to. Yes. So I need to. So prior to Tuesday, if whoever wants to be a delegate can let me know, we need three. Yes, they did a lot of changes on a Saturday in Mechanicsburg. Yes, no virtual.
And it's Sunday, it's like Sunday to Tuesdays, the, no, no, the assembly is, but there's a, there's a, there's a.
There's a conference.
There's a conference.
Need people to.
Yes, we need three. Well, up to three. So, you know, I know my email will be flooded tomorrow.
I will say, having gone, it's really valuable for our school district to participate and we have not in the past. And this is a chance to really shape PSBA and, you know, what their priorities are and sort of the tone that they take. I've done it. I have done it.
We have participated in the past, right?
We have, we have in the past couple of years prior to that. I don't know that we have a lot.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but I mean, I'm, yeah, I just want that clear. We have.
Something Hillary was there. I'm just saying, I mean, if no one else is going to do it, of course, I'm going to do it, but please don't make me do it.
So as the one who was in the room last year, I will say it's enormously beneficial to go in person and meet other people. And I think that there there are some really good proposals that don't get a lot of great traction and they get shut down with procedural things and all sorts of stuff. And it would be really helpful to have representation. I agree 100%.
It would be really helpful to have a lawyer be one of our representatives to be able to address their parliamentarian who does not always have it correct.
My daughter's 15th birthday on that beautiful day, so we shall find out another.
Maybe people can think on it and decide. It is on a Tuesday. People got jobs, but you know, 2:30 Kalahari Resort. How far is it? Was that two hours?
Hours away.
Yeah, I don't drive that far. I'm out. I'm out. So maybe think about it and get back to me, anybody. And Hillary's not here, so maybe Hillary's going to go.
Well, there's a bunch of us from the DCIU who are thinking of going, so I'm.
All right. So we got two. We got Ken, Hillary and Shelley. There we go. But put Hillary a question mark. But but she not here, so that's her.
I'll see if my family wants to take a trip up to the water park and I'll get back to you.
Okay, and definitely Shelley. Okay. Thank you. So pretty much the remainder of the finance agenda is all of the appointments that we do through this year. So if you want, we can just go through them really quickly. If you have any questions, just let me know. Percent agenda for all of it. Yes.
Look at all those great things you do, Vanessa, for no additional compensation. I mean, we didn't really just go past that so quickly.
The tuition rates.
We do this every year where we slap all these additional responsibilities on Vanessa. Is this normal? Do other districts run this leanly?
Yes.
They do.
We do want to recognize how much Vanessa does.
Thank you. Then there's change orders. So this gives me the approval to move forward any change orders. And I'll do like I've done in the past, send them out and let you all know before I sign them, but just so they not hold up any of the multiple projects this summer. Oh, yeah. What are we selling? I'm not sure what we're selling. Oh, it might be food, service, old mixers maybe, but I'll check and let you know. Then that's my newest one, the Delaware County Public School Healthcare Trust. So we previously approved that they had sent the wrong date. They thought it ended in June 30 of 2025, but it actually ends June 30 of 2026. So that's just adding the next year. Yes. And then budgetary transfers, budgetary comparison report, which will be posted tomorrow. Thank you.
All right, are we good? Any questions? Comments? All right, moving on. Education and wellness.
You're starting, yes?
I'm going to start. Is that okay?
Yes.
And Dr. Kuhn, right, you can go ahead and go to the presenter table. So I am standing in for Mr. Dougherty, who is graduating his third daughter this long weekend. So I am going to be presenting two presentations regarding the survey. And if you have questions that I cannot answer because I was not a part of of this project, I'm going to take them and I'm going to get back to everyone. So I appreciate that. But we will go ahead and get started with the sense of belonging survey. This, as you know, took the place of our youth truth survey. We followed that same model in that we conducted the survey just once this year. One thing that we've already decided that it will be administered at the beginning and at the end of the year next year to get better data. So kind of moving forward with that. They were looking at sense of belonging in our school, in particular academic challenge and school culture. And this is really, if you think about the the Likert scale that was used, it was a five leveled scale. What Mr. Dougherty has put together is just the questions and then whether it was a strong response or whether it was an area that we needed to grow in. Maybe a little time. This is just, again, indicating one of our our strengths is the relationships we have with our teachers. Which we knew that, our great teachers. Some areas that for growth, the students looking at all of our schools, we're talking just about their classmates. Do they notice when I'm doing something good in school? And do we feel like we're treated with as much respect as other students in the school? So this was an area that came in kind of about a three instead of very strong or always.
I know this is not your involvement, but do you mind if we go back one for a second?
Sure.
Classmates at my school notice when I'm good at something.
Just again, belonging with, what is the culture like in your classroom? That's something we work on with our responsive classroom and our morning meeting and kind of developing that.
So students would know what kind of things that would be.
Complimenting one another, encouraging one another, noticing the talents and uniqueness of of our of each other is something that we really talk about.
Because I can definitely see where teachers, I guess I would, depending on the age, it might be a little bit strange to think.
Questions were based on questions that were introduced to our students through the youth truth over the last three years. And others were questions that came up when the committee met to design.
So you're listing all the prompts. Okay, so these were, if you can go back a slide. So these are the prompts that they had.
These are the questions, yeah.
These are the questions and they had to rate it on a scale of one to five.
Yes.
How much they thought that applied to them. But we don't have what the average scores are for any.
We don't, Mr. Dougherty didn't give them for this survey. He did for the next one. I'm going to show you. So we are going to take a deeper look at this. These are just the kind of the initial
Okay.
organization of, because we just got these responses back and he wanted to get them to everyone
Okay.
before the end of the year, but we will be looking at them in greater detail.
Okay, that makes more sense because I'm like, the first one says it was really great and the other one says we need room for improvement. I'm like, how do we know that? So, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can you remind us what grade levels took the survey? Three through 12? Thank you. Yes.
Some other areas of strength when we're looking at our academic achievement and school culture, particular for the elementaries with safety. Do you feel comfortable asking for help in class? How do you feel when you come to school each day? Just very positive. Students were always feeling comfortable and and that was a strength of ours. Another one, do your teachers, are they available to support you? And how well do they support you with understanding difficult concepts? Both areas of strength. For this one, an area we need to grow, I mean, this is again, something that we've seen in our in our youth truth over the last three years. 15% of our students report schoolwork being either too easy or too hard. 50% of the students reporting peer interactions as mostly respectful. So those were two areas that we wanted to grow in. Really does point, and you're going to see this in the next survey a little bit as well, the one that our families took. When you think about our MTSS model, where we really do measure whether our curriculum and instruction is being accessed by our students, we want eight, at least 85%, right? That's what you can expect. So that kind of falls in line, right, with our MTSS triangle, that 15%. And that what really are next steps? Mr. Dougherty is going to be doing a deeper look at this with administration and then with teachers, really an analysis and response, and then coming back with goals to the board. This is hard while we are on Zoom. I apologize. So this is the parent and and this is a little bit different format. He does have a little bit more data organization in this one. But this were our parent and guardians. I took it myself as a parent in the district. So our engagement and school climate. So here you can kind of see, this was the Likert scale for this survey. And you can see the total number of responses.
I had a question about this before you move on. I was just wondering what the total was and the total number of families. What was your response rate for this survey?
You know, I'm not sure, but I will get that for, we have the total number of people who responded, but I'm not sure. You know, when you think about, we have about 4,000 students, so I'm not sure what that percentage.
Yeah.
Comes out to, but we will. Absolutely.
Yeah, for your response rate. Yeah, thank you.
Looking at relationships, how comfortable do you feel contacting your child's teacher or principal with questions and concerns? 89% of our families said comfortable or somewhat comfortable. How welcome do we feel? 88%. How well does the school respect and celebrate cultural diversity? 80% said very or somewhat comfortable. Child's school promoting an inclusive and respectful environment for our students. That was an 88%. How often do you participate in school events, parent teacher conferences, PTG meetings, school activities? 85% said regularly or occasionally. School communication regarding important updates and events. 92% of those who responded said it was very or somewhat effective. Do you feel your school values and considers parent and guardian feedback when making making decisions? 73% yet said yes, always. That was together or most of the time. And then for school safety, how safe do you feel your child's school is? 89% said very safe or somewhat safe. And those are the questions for the family survey.
A couple of questions. The culture question with 80% very comfortable and somewhat comfortable. Is there any thought about this? I mean, our district is 80% white, so I'm not sure this is a helpful way of asking this question. Trying to find out more about people who are outside of the.
Well, I mean, I think the one concern I would have, I definitely take your point, Ken, but like, it's not just a color thing, right? So I feel like this question is broader as well because it encompasses, and if you want to parse it out, that might be a different conversation as far as how to have a question in a survey. But when I would read this, I would think about all types of ethnicity, religion, nationality, in addition to to race, right? So.
Sure, but I I still think it holds that 80% is, when you're looking at diversity of groups, some of which, some of which are represented by a small number of people, having just one number that's 80% does not a way to represent.
It's such a big number. It's hard to unpack, right? What exactly does that mean? What is it showing us? I actually agree with that. I'm just saying I would be very careful to not just say, because we're 80% white, like that's a broader question.
Oh, I'm. I was just using that comment as a way of pointing out that this doesn't get to the heart of the.
Because who are the 20% is what I think what you're getting at.
Yeah.
This also goes back to my question about your response rate. Do you know that you have a representative sample of the families in our school district? As we interpret the data, it's helpful to know kind of what that was, what the margin is on that.
I will certainly mark that.
Yeah, no, that's right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I know Bill did some more work, Joe, about specifically related to holidays and cultural celebrations. And we might want to roll that data into this as well.
I can get, I can.
Yes.
What we, he presented to, or what we shared with policy committee, I can get that out to the full board.
And again, of course, the communication and feedback number is the lowest we have here. I know we have a communication plan that we're working through, right? So hopefully that'll help address some of these issues. And and these were just one-off questions. Am I, am I right in that? So that we don't have any sort of further.
Correct.
Yeah.
So next steps, as Krista talked about, there'll be discussions going into the summer with the the administrative staff of each of the buildings that'll focus specifically on, you know, the responses that came into their schools, both the raw information and then the breakdown of that information. Because it it does, you know, kind of guide us in directions for what do we want to ask in the fall, right? What is that follow-up? In what areas do we want to go deeper? And what does it mean? They were, because it's the first time we've done it this manner, they were more broad rather than being more specific to kind of get the big picture look. And we will start to drill down a little bit, but we'll work with each of the principals as they're developing their own plans within their schools about what does it mean and how do they respond?
If you just look at the numbers of representations, it does seem to be skewed towards the elementary school families based on the sheer numbers of people who responded.
Is not atypical from rental participation and events and things, you know, but.
Right, so Dr. Kuhnrod is going to go ahead and give us a brief update on, I believe, strategic, our strategic plan.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So what we're going to be taking a look at this evening is just kind of what are the next steps in taking a look at a strategic plan for the district. And a strategic plan is obviously about planning for the future, going into it with a clear idea and and full input. So the two things we actually take a look at always usually are where are we now and, or where we are now, sorry, and where are we going to be in the future? So where are we now? We are, you approved actually the comprehensive plan, which we submitted to the state back in March. It was due on March 31st. We turned it in by March 28th, so we were out of the game. That is a legal requirement that we have to do is the comprehensive plan, like we talked about a couple of different times over this past year. And a lot of the things that are in there are ones that the requirements that go into that are usually ones that are tied to various pieces of legislation. We need to be able to show that we're doing X, Y, and Z and the planning, the documentation that we provide in those plans and the gifted plan, in the special ed plans, in all of these plans is how we provide that information to the state that we are complying with with the laws and the regulations. But within that, we did build on the priorities that were established through Dr. Malash with the idea of, you know, designing and implementing instructional model focused on effective pedagogical practices to support individual students. You know, designing and implementing instructional models focused on effective pedagogical practices to support individual student success. And provide an environment that promotes greater opportunity to increase depth, increase depth of understanding for all students. So these are the kind of the broad priorities we took a look at in looking at the academic components of these plans. The goals we set, these are kind of put into the framework of what the state requires them in that comprehensive planning portal. Which is everything has to be tied back to the data that is provided in the state's future-ready PA index. So we did the goal one was basically meeting the Pennsylvania standard for growth in our assessed subjects.
I just asked a question, I'm sorry.
Certainly.
I might have just missed it. So these were goals from the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Okay.
This is kind of, this is to give the, this is where we are right now and then how we're going to, what the next steps are. Because that was actually some of the questions you were asking last time is, okay, we've got this now, now what? And goal two was again, again focusing on achievement goals, particularly in ELA. Keep on doing that. Yeah, strategies, and the strategies we talked about that we are implementing is the adoption of our new K eight ELA program. The K to five being CKLA, the Core Knowledge Language Arts, which we approved. And then the, that's our K five, and then the six eight is the Amplify program. Structured literacy, which we're already starting to do some professional development with staff regarding structured literacy and the science of reading. The implementation of the block schedule and continued emphasis on differentiated of instruction. Okay, so now, where are we going to be in the future? And that's the whole purpose of the strategic plan, is to try and figure out where do we want to be as a community. So the idea is the why, we take a look at the process and a very, very general timeline. So why a strategic plan? To ensure consistent thoughtful progress towards the goals that we set. And develop along a longer timeframe to affect consistent implementation, monitoring and evaluation. That, that longer timeframe is the key here. The comprehensive plan that we're required to present to the state, we have to submit it every three years. The problem is if you do something in three years, you're almost barely getting it off the ground before you're trying to report and decide. Is it effective or not? Do we go forward or not? So typically strategic plans, you're looking at a more of five to six-year. So you have time to actually implement something, see how it's going, make adjustments. And evaluate it before you're trying to go forward and see where we go from there. So that's, in a nutshell, that, that one of the main components or ideas of doing a strategic plan is. Yes, we will meet the state requirements and we'll fold those into our strategic plan, but. To do it really effectively, we need to have this longer outlook beyond just three years. So what are some of the major components, the ideas of it, why doing it? Obviously, when you're planning, you're putting this much forethought into it. You're not putting out fires, you're actually looking, how do we improve? So that is student success, resource planning, obviously we've had a lot of that here tonight. But again, budgeting takes time and to do it really well. It needs several years, not just one year or not just month to month, obviously. Community engagement, can bring in more people from the community, the different groups that are involved. Parents, community members, educators, shop owners. And, and students and to get in the different points of view. When you have it structured, then it also gives them adaptability. To account for things like changes in enrollment, to really think of things. And then accountability, again, make sure everything is open, available for people to see. To make it people for time to track progress and how we're doing. So the process. Again, it follows along this idea of structured decision-making. You create this one where it's, it's done according to the goal, according to the plans you've set, the mission, the vision and everything. Stakeholder alignment, again, doing a strategic plan aligns to what, because everybody has a voice in it. Data-driven approach, obviously. Focus on not just, okay, what's our academic, the state assessment data, but what are the other data that are important? So things like the culture surveys that we just did, things, research trends, what are we seeing around? How are we incorporating this into where we're going and how we're making decisions going forward? Again, establishes consistency and accountability, everything's clear, it's in the open as to why things are being done. And also to track progress. And then again, maintain, maintain that idea of adaptability when that's needed. So basic timeline. This summer would be to establish the steering committee. Who is going to be involved, volunteers? In the September work on vision and mission, we have a mission and vision of the district. Start from there, does it need to be altered? Do we need to refine? Is it good as the way it is? Those are decisions that would be made. Or recommendations that would be made then back to the board here. Data collection and organization, September, October, it'll be actually going on, we'll be working on data collection and stuff all through. We don't stop with that. We do put September and October because a lot of the state assessment data from this past year will be updated by that time. Usually the growth measures come in, in October, sometimes early November, they always just say early to mid-fall. That's as specific as the state will give us, until they say, guess what, it's arriving tomorrow? Yes. I like those deadlines, just, just so you know. Obviously, then there becomes root cause analysis. So the things that we're seeing in the data from community comments to everything else. What are our strengths, our challenges, and why do we think things are the way they are? Then it's a mashup of relooking at priorities and goals, where do we really want to be in six years? And then how are we going to get there, the action planning? And then obviously approval by the board and communication. Detailed communication going out.
So it's, and Andy, thank you for doing it, great information. This, we envision this as a, as a bridge with the comprehensive plans, right? Part of it is why it's not done exactly the same time. The strategic plan is actually the work that, that we expect the district to do. Approaching it in this manner allows for a systemic look at how things are done. Shouldn't matter who's sitting in the chair, right? Who's in the, in the board member's chair or who's in the superintendent's chair? There are systemic things that this district needs to continue to do. And this will establish that foundation and give us that range over the course of about five years or so. It will also bridge the comprehensive plans. That'll make the comprehensive plan a little bit easier to do in one sense, but it'll at least have that bigger picture in terms of what's going on. So I'm excited about the work, it was a good discussion with, with the comprehensive plan this year. We'll start the discussion, we've started the discussion, we'll continue the discussion into July. I expect that we'll probably approach a board retreat in August and do a big launch with that. And the discussion that evening when we are together for there. We are going to expect and need a couple of board members to be active and sitting members on this committee through that time. Very valuable, very important, you know, your perspective and your voice because of your legislative role is very important as we move forward. So expect that you'll get some stuff to take a look at as a board as you do during the course of the summer. And then we'll have more in-depth discussion and retreat and something to roll out and present out on, at the work session in September.
Do you have a sense of how you'd like to see the steering committee comprised? I mean, who's going to be represented? Will we have community members who don't have kids in schools, for instance?
We will, we'll look for community members slash, you know, folks that are involved in business, that are engaged and involved. We'll look for staff members and we'll probably have at least one student from the high school to be involved as well. I don't know that the high school student will be at all of them, but to be a part of the committee and a sitting member to be able to give perspective.
All right, thank you. I think now we have some stuff from student services.
Is that right?
Yep.
Hello, everybody.
Thanks.
Everything that is on the agenda from, from the student services are contracts that just need to be renewed or approved. The SNAP renewal is the software that our, our nurses use to, to log visits, which we need to do. The next several contracts are students who have been currently placed in out-of-district schools for, for their educational purposes. So that's us renewing those contracts or working through their ESY placement, so their extended school year. Which would be part of their IEP placement is always. An IEP team decision and all of these contracts were, were students that had been placed there previously. There is no student that has been recommended for a different placement. And let's see. Letter H is part of our Linking Learning to Life, the Game on State contract, where our students are able to work in, in the store. We're renewing that contract, there's no change in the cost. Camp Hill is again another student place according to the IEP team, same with Cades. Overbrook School for the Blind. And then when we get down to two of our therapeutic facilitators. They have been working with the district for a number of years and provide a tremendous resource to our students. Particularly at a time when it is hard to find therapeutic facilitators. So I'm very excited that we're able to keep, actually we have all three. The third person is not on the agenda this evening just because she was away and was not able to get us the contracts that we could get it onto the board. But we should be able to do that through an addendum, so we're expecting all three of them to be renewed for next year. There is an increase in their pay that had gone from sixty-five dollars to seventy dollars an hour. In the five years that they have been in, in the district, there had been no increase in, in their pay. And it is a very fair rate to the, to the district at the seventy dollars an hour. So I thought that was a very reasonable ask of our therapeutic facilitators. And I was pleased to be able to, to put that out here for us to approve that. Again, the work that they provide to our, to our school team is really significant.
And then we just have the overnight field trips from CNI?
Yep, that would be Krista.
Yes, that's me.
Love. Which is appreciated. All right, and then going down into human resources. Run through these, Mr. Dougherty, science teacher at the high school, has submitted his retirement. So he will be finishing up, he's in his, his last week, he just put that through. He's been in the district, he's completed twenty-five years in the district. Change in retirement dates, these are the three secretaries at Springton Lake, just adjusting their date, taking them to July first. Again, their retirements have already been approved. Resignation of supplemental contracts. Appointment of professional employees. These are two new staff members who will be joining us, we've had some great interviews. Reassignment, two teachers at the elementary level. Classification change of professional employees, and this is just a reassignment within buildings. As opposed to going from one building to another. Also of classified employees. Supplemental reading Olympics supervisor. Professional staff to serve as ESY teacher. Apparated supplemental contract, Ms. Cato is the, she is the long-term sub for the vocal department at Pencrest High School. And then these are the policies that will be discussed on June ninth. We have not had our policy committee meeting yet just because of the change in our schedule. All right?
Questions about any of this comments?
No, this is the only place where I know where to toss this in though, is I guess the. Pencrest Theater Group had their awards banquet a couple of weeks ago. And apparently they gave a shout-out to the board for looking at, for paying the directors this year and for. Bringing on more things and I think, I, I don't, I think the comment was treating them more like a sport. So just wanted to let you know, they acknowledged us.
All right, I won't comment.
It's, it's always nice for the board to be thanked, it doesn't, doesn't happen to all of them, right?
All right. I guess we're done, right? I thought it'd be a longer evening, but isn't this nice? All right, oh yes, graduation is, Pencrest graduation is tomorrow morning, right, so I will see you all there. Ten, be there around nine thirty-five or nine forty, people. Be there before then. You should be there before then.